Good afternoon, everyone. So we do have a quorum. Good afternoon, welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following Landmark List bills: Twenty-two dash oh-two-six-two, twenty-two dash oh-two-six-three, twenty-two dash oh-two-six-four, twenty-two dash oh-two-six-five, and twenty-two dash oh-two-seven-seven. In attendance today, we have John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mark Conway of the Fourth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District. And Zeke Cohen of the First District, which is the sponsor of one of these landmark bills.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And representing the Office of the Mayor, we have Sophia G. of Governmental Relations. And now, we will begin. And I just want to say that all of these landmark bills are just very important and just another piece of history in making changes and add to the things that we are all doing in trying to move our city forward in the right direction. So, thank you all, and thank you for the agencies and for kind of moving all of this forward. So, let's begin. Bill number twenty-two dash oh-two-six-two, the Landmark List exteriors Baltimore City Engine Company fourteen firehouse for the purpose of designating the Baltimore City Engine Company fourteen firehouse, nineteen oh-eight Holland Street, block oh-two-oh-seven, lot zero-zero-five, as in historical landmark exterior. This bill was introduced on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Bullock. And Councilmember Bullock, would you like to make some comments?
Sure, and good afternoon, and thank you, Madam Chair. So, Engine fourteen firehouse is an historic building in its own right. But I know many Baltimoreans became familiar with some of the fire personnel who was working out of Engine fourteen, who unfortunately succumbed fighting a fire within the Ninth District. This building means a lot to the community. It means a lot to the Fire Department. And it also is part of the historic fabric of our neighborhood. Again, you could go inside the building and see the beautiful architecture. You could see it from the outside as well. I know we've had the pleasure of working with CHAP as the City Council's representative. And I know that they've done an extensive report regarding the building. And so, again, I look forward to hearing more details, being able to be shared with the committee, and looking forward to a favorable resolution. So, thank you again.
Thank you. And I also want to give a shout-out to Eric Holcomb that thank you so much for taking your time and going to your office and going through those technical difficulties that we periodically have, just to make sure, you know, all of the findings and, you know, things are summed up correctly. So, we really appreciate you and your office for that help with all of these landmark lists. It sounds like it might be something simple, but there really is a lot of paperwork and meetings and things that his office has to go through to sign postings, which are very important, so that, you know, the community is aware. So, there's a lot of pre-things that really have to be set in place before we actually have hearings on all landmarks. And on that note, we'll start with the Law Department, which gave a favorable.
Michelle Thoth, on behalf of the Law Department, we stand by our report, and we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. And Eric Holcomb with the Commission of Historical and Architectural Preservation, better known as CHAP.
Thank you so much. And I just want to thank you all for working with us to preserve and celebrate the great history we have in Baltimore and using that history to make this great city even greater. I'm going to just stop there, because I do have two staff here, and they're the experts on here. So, I think with the next bills too, we'll just go right to them, and they could tell you why that's important and significant to the history of Baltimore. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Lauren Shizik with CHAP. And I wrote the landmark designation report for this firehouse. And this firehouse is the longest operating firehouse in Baltimore City. It's likely the second-longest operating firehouse in the state of Maryland. Really significant, yeah. Unfortunately, Hagerstown is just a couple years older than ours. But, you know, this firehouse was opened in eighteen eighty-eight, and the firehouse and generations of firefighters and Engine Company fourteen have tirelessly served southwest Baltimore for over a hundred and thirty years. So, architecturally, it's significant, but it's really arguably more significant for just the longevity of its length of service to the community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. That's good information. I always thought the fire station in Roland Park was the oldest, but, and they have been designated for a while, but I see there's others that are much older. Any questions at this point to the CHAPs? Moving on, Planning Commission? They gave a favorable report. BMZA?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Sophia from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. BMZA stands by their report.
Thank you. Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. I just wanted to note that this building is located one block outside of our southwest Impact Investment Area, which is undergoing significant community development. DHCD is also undertaking, has undertaken significant demolition on Holland Street and the surrounding blocks along South Basin and South Monroe Street. And we believe firmly that preserving historically significant structures will not only support the well-being and overall health of the neighborhood, it may also help the neighborhood as it experiences growth and community revitalization. So, we stand by our favorable bill report. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And BDC?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Micah Fetz for the BDC. BDC stands by its report, and the report is favorable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We definitely want to make, we're going to take public testimony now. And we definitely want to just make sure that we always, I always kind of make this statement that we, you know, keep order in the chambers, and anyone that is in a disorderly manner will be asked to leave. So, we take this chamber serious and the work that we do in this committee. So, now, we'll take public testimony. And each person testifying will have three, about three minutes to speak. So, we'll start with, and if I mispronounce your name wrong, please forgive me.
Madam Chair, just to let you know that Councilman Stokes is here.
Okay. And Councilman Stokes, member of the committee of the Twelfth District, is present. I think we already, we don't, we already had people that testified in person, so we're now checking. Any hand raises? Please raise your hand now for the Firehouse Bill. And we have one. Dominique, are you there? Dominic? Hello?
Hello.
Hi. Are you here to testify on the Firehouse?
Yes, ma'am.
You're on.
So, I am the former captain of this station. And I would like to say thank you for allowing me to speak. And this station really makes a lot to the community. It has been a staple, except for Bonner's to Course Hospital around the corner. There has been nothing in this area that has remained, except for the station and Bonner's to Course Hospital. So, I would like to make sure that everybody understands that this is really, really a good thing for the community, because it remains something that is a constant.
Thank you so much for your testimony. It is, you are being recorded.
Thank you.
And we'll check for any more hands raised. And seeing none, we'll now move to telephone callers. Please unmute yourself if, Prince Kay. Prince Kay, are you on?
It's Prince Sky PA. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I'm Prince Sky PA. I'm the current captain of Engine Company fourteen. And just want to reach out to everyone and just, on behalf, just thank everyone for the hard work. As Captain Fierchetti mentioned a few moments ago, this station is the bedrock of this community. And for well over a hundred years, the members of this station have worked tirelessly and continue to do so to provide great quality service to each and every person that live and come in and out of our city. So, just want to thank everyone for their hard work, Councilmember Bullock and so many others, who so tirelessly put forth the effort. The mayor, of course, for every single thing that we're looking forward to. Well over a hundred more years of great service, and looking forward to the future with great optimism.
Thank you so much for your important testimony. Any other phone callers on the Firehouse Bill? And seeing none, do committee members have any comments? Hearing none, the committee heard testimony and recommendations that support the legal standards and findings, and there are no amendments. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Bullock, second by, I think Conway was first, Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway is a yes. Dorsey absent, Glover absent, Ramos is a yes, and Stokes.
Can I explain my vote? I apologize for being late, but I'm supportive of fire stations and whatever the community wants. So, yes.
Thank you. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Congratulations to those on that bill. Now, we'll hear bill number twenty-two dash oh-two-six-three, another landmark list exteriors of Harlem Theater for the purpose of designating the Harlem Theater, six-one-six North Gilmore Street, block zero-one-one-zero, lot zero-zero-eight, as in historical landmark exterior. This bill was introduced on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And also, the sponsor also is Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember Bullock?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. And again, it's my pleasure to introduce another historic piece. Harlem Park is a community that is historical in its own right. There's a legacy of struggle, of progress, of resiliency. And the Harlem Theater is an example of such a structure. Here, we have a building that dates back, and you could look at the CHAP report, from everything from being a theater to being a church, to being a place now where you're going to have artists and makers doing some great things for the community. But also, I think it's important to preserve this landmark as there are folks who descend upon Harlem Park, understanding that there is a long history there. There's a long legacy. And I thank the Francis family for being here and doing the work that they're doing currently in the community to not only preserve that legacy, but also to create a future for our young people and have this building to look as an example. So, again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Just another bit of history in Harlem Park. It made me think back. My first high school sweetheart was from Harlem Park community. So, now, the committee will hear agency reports. The City Solicitor's Office?
Michelle Thoth, on behalf of the Law Department. And I stand, we stand by our report.
Thank you. And CHAPs?
Yes, of course, CHAP recommends designation. You know, this was, this structure was originally built as a church for, and it was a spiritual home for white residents of Harlem Park in the neighborhood for several decades. And then, following the neighborhood's rapid transition in the nineteen twenties to a black neighborhood, the church was transformed into an opulent first-run theater for black Baltimoreans. And along with serving as a theater, it also served as a venue for theater and concerts. And it was a very important center of community that operated for four decades, closing its door after desegregation. Also notably, the Harlem Theater is the sole surviving first-run theater that was built for black Baltimoreans. The other two are gone. So, this is such an important legacy to maintain and preserve for the future.
Thank you. And you're, just for the record, your name again?
Oh, sorry. My name is Lauren Shizik.
Okay. Oh, okay. So, the United States Union Army camped in the area, is what I'm told? Near Lafayette Square, near Harlem Park?
They did, yes, in Lafayette Square.
Okay. Another historical piece of information. Any questions for CHAPs? Moving on, and the Planning Commission also gave a favorable report. BMZA also, basically, no comment, but they are moving forward with planning as determined. And housing, Stephanie?
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. Similar to the last bill, we do believe that preserving historically significant structures does support the well-being and overall health of this neighborhood. And we also hope that this landmark designation may open up opportunities for redevelopment of the surrounding blocks, which includes some vacant lots that are presently open for bid. So, we are happy to request a favorable report on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Baltimore Development Corporation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Micah Fetz again for the BDC. BDC stands by its report, and the BDC has no objection to the passage of this council bill. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a little longer list for this bill. And we'll start with, if I pronounce your name wrong, please forgive me. Is that Leon Miller? Yes. You want to come up to the podium and identify who you are? And give your testimony on this wonderful landmark of Harlem Theater?
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Leon Miller, and I have lived in Harlem Park my entire seventy-seven years, except for when Uncle Sam called. I had to leave then. But other than that, I've been there. Right now, I've been displaced because of what's going on, the tang down, the building up and whatever. But I cannot say enough about Harlem Park. I mean, after living there all of my life, I mean, I can tell you some stories. I mean, I was in Fort Knox, Kentucky, telling guys about the Harlem Theater. I don't know how I'm there, or know what I was telling them. But it's, I mean, I get lost for words when I try to explain it, right? I'm just saying, help us. We need you. We really do. Don't want to lose it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. We begun that process. Angela Francis?
Let other people speak, in case we run out of time.
You got to come to the mic. But you said you want somebody else to go before you?
Uh, yes.
Okay, okay. We'll have Lauren. Oh, you already spoken. Johns Hopkins is here?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Johns Hopkins with the nonprofit organization Baltimore Heritage. And I just wanted to say thanks for the effort from Angela and her associates. And wanted to just say two things really quickly. When the Harlem Theater opened, the night it opened and that marquee lit up, a thousand light bulbs lit up all of west Baltimore. And I am not surprised, sir, that you're talking about that in Fort Knox, Tennessee. It was a big deal in Baltimore, west Baltimore, in Baltimore's black community, in Baltimore. And I just wanted to come here to say thank you for recognizing its importance, both historically and where it's heading today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Nikia, did I say your name wrong? Nika, sorry. And Nika? How are you?
The double N is silent. Good afternoon. My name is Nika Namdi. I need to put on my, y'all have to bear with me.
You can pull that down a little bit more, the microphone.
Oh, okay. Good afternoon. I'm Nika Namdi. I'm the creator of Fight Light Be More and the co-creator of the Stop Oppressive Seizures Fund. I'm here in both capacities to support City Council Bill twenty-two oh-two-six-three for the landmark designation of the Harlem Theater. The theater is a site of black cultural activity and production in old west Baltimore since before the nineteen forties. The site should be designated as a landmark because it functioned as competent space for social and cultural activities for the people of Harlem Park. Sadly, many similar sites of black cultural production throughout Baltimore have been lost through the city's creation and upkeep of races, housing, and community development policy, like Gallows Hill, now Preston Park. This designation won't right any wrongs, but it will serve to mark the theater as a space of historic value in a city, in the city. As a record, as a record, we, as a city, have lost putting the appropriate value on Harlem Park and the Harlem Theater. The Harlem Theater must receive the appropriate designation as a landmark as a means of projecting its value to the vibrancy being curated today and for the brilliant future of Harlem Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony and your advocacy, your housing advocacy. There might be someone that hasn't checked off. Is there someone that wants to testify? Oh, come on. Is it on this bill?
Yes.
Okay. You can come in. Oh, I see, at the very bottom. Okay, you can come on up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I met Angela Francis two years ago. We were actually at the same event, and she was promoting the giving out of school supplies. And I was soliciting for families that I would be tutoring at a particular site. And since then, we have been doing what we do best, and that is supporting the efforts of community, always putting community first, its efforts. I wouldn't even be here, would not know about the theater, would not have learned about the theater unless I had met Angela that fall, two years ago. And so, I'm here to fully support the efforts. I have been tutoring some of the most needed students in Baltimore City for over ten years, starting in two thirty-seven, and then I went to two fifteen, then I went to Wolf Street Academy, then to Merrell, and currently at NAF. And so, Angela and I have been speaking about the need for support, including Augusta Fell students that are just across the street from Harlem Park, Harlem Theater, excuse me. And so, we have talked about how it would be wonderful to open up our own school, starting with an aftercare program, supporting the students that are first locally, Augusta Fell's, and then bringing the arts. I went to Maryland Institute College of Art. So, I, being bilingual, being in the community, and being an advocate for my own children, who are honor roll students, I'm so glad to say that, from NAF and Merrell, and that that extension of first at home, then community, and then our city, we can really see that Harlem Theater can be both an educational hub for language learning, for literacy, and lifelong learners. So, I thank you for the opportunity.
And your name again, for the record?
Blanca Tapawosco.
Thank you. Thank you for your, the education piece is extremely important. And then, now, we'll go back to Angela. Oh, is there anyone else? I think Angela wants to be last. Go ahead. Your name and who you represent?
Yes, sure. My name is Anthony Francis. I'm a resident and son of Angela.
And son of Angela?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to come up here and, again, just touch on the importance of community. And not just, you know, Harlem Park is a structure in the community, but what it represents is much more important. And I speak to the kids in high schools around the city about how, when I was coming up, there was a sense of community. We could be three or four blocks away from the house, and that person's mother knew us, or anybody could come out their door, and we respected them. If we were making too much noise, anybody's grandma came out the house. We straightened up. And Harlem Park, especially the Harlem Theater, represented that hub and was a safe haven and a place for young kids in that community to attend. Children and adults alike to commune and be a community again outside of just the structures that make up Harlem Park. People can come back and commune and, again, get back to making that a community again. Because as of right now, there's more structures than people. And so, we're trying to change that. As we know, the community is being gentrified. We want to make sure that the people who have held up the city with their own blood, sweat, and tears have a chance to remain in that community and see it thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Exactly. Thank you for your testimony. And Angela? Oh, wait, there was someone else. Come on up.
Peace and blessings. I won't hold everybody up too long. I just wanted to speak on Sister Angela's behalf. And my name is Everett Winchester. My organization is the UNIA, and we provide powerful information and cultural information for our black community. And I was really inspired, because we did an event across the street from the Harlem Theater, how everybody was passionate talking about the history. And I called Sister Angela, and I was letting her know that we would love to do events there, be a safe haven, entrepreneurial events, cultural events to teach people about their history, but also a place where we could do educational events. As you know, people that are uneducated do uneducated things. And that's a main problem in our community. And so, she's reached out. The people have embraced the things that she's doing. So, it would be a blessing for us to be able to use that theater to have events for the community, things like educational training, cultural training, so people know about their history and know about the history of the theater. When they see great things that were in the community, they tend to take care of the community and embrace the community. And I think that's very important. And I just, I'm so passionate about what the sister's doing, so I had to come here today to show my support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Angela Francis? You can pull that down to your mic.
Good afternoon.
You can take your mask off while you're speaking, if you like.
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Francis. I'm one of the curators for the Harlem Theater. We refer to ourselves as curators, because as you can see, the Harlem is owned by the entire Harlem Park community. An African proverb says, "During a crisis, the wise build bridges, and the foolish builds dams." So, I formed Baltimore Coalition for Positive Change. The coalition comprises Harlem Park legacy residents and businesses who have been displaced or are facing displacement. Many of them are here with us today. Together, we are taking bold steps to control our fate and improve the socioeconomic status of all families living in Harlem Park. The Harlem Theater and twenty vacant properties owned by the legacy residents will be transformed into a multipurpose cultural arts facility, empowerment zone, and resilience nerve center, augmented to deliver critical resources and services before, during, and after a natural disaster or traumatic event. Our vision employs a creative placemaking and asset-based redevelopment plan. Therefore, rather than focusing on Harlem Park's deficits, we are emphasizing its local assets, including using, which includes using and building upon the knowledge and skills of its residents. We are artists.
We are artists, artisans, educators, spiritual leaders, cultural organizations, advocacy groups, and social impact entrepreneurs with over 50 years of wealth management and real estate development experience. The vision for the project organically grew into a movement to establish a live where you educate, create, and innovate corridor, including a 21st century multilegal, lingual education and social justice center, a co-working lab and social incubator, which creates a hyper-local economy and a local skill force development team. It will function as a 21st century culturally competent education and economic hub, but indoctrinate the traditional ideologies of a village rooted in the African proverb, "Umbutu." Umbutu means "I am because we are." As legacy residents and stakeholders in Harlem Park, we have learned to survive, and in some cases thrive, despite challenging circumstances, given us the knowledge and courage to transform the western edge of Harlem Park into an equitable residential and cultural destination where residents and visitors are encouraged to live, learn, create, innovate, and explore. And in short, yes, landmark designation is important. The building is important. But it is actually a lifeline for those of us who are there who are just trying to figure out how to survive what we've already survived, but also what's coming. And so, we're not asking for a handout. We're asking for people to join hands with us. As we see on the TV from people at the council, right? You say you want the community to come together. We've come together and figured it out. And so, maybe people should start listening to us. Because again, we figured out how to remain in these communities, Mr. Leon himself, 77 years with our resources. Everyone knows what's going on. I'd like to thank you, Councilman Bullock, for hearing us. Because it wasn't like we weren't... We are not the silent or the voiceless. We have been screaming. And finally, Lauren, you too, right? And I would be remiss not to mention my pastor, the late Dr. Raymond Kelly Jr. Again, this is a passion project. It was not something that they wanted to do. It was not something that they wanted to do at all. Unfortunately, he lost his life a couple of years ago. But he kind of passed the torch to me, because he knew that, again, we would rebuild as a community. Oftentimes, people refer to us as developers. We are not developers. I say we are the people... Well, someone said, "We're the people in the pits." The banks would say to me, "Why, I love your vision, but not for the people in the pits. Why are you in the pits?" So, I changed the pits to stand for the people in the soil. We're the people in the soil that no one sees. We don't do interviews, you know? We don't have any accolades or titles. But without the nutrients in the soils, nothing that's happening in Baltimore City would happen without us. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We definitely feel your passion. You're in the right direction, and partnerships are the key.
Thank you.
We're now going to take check with public testimony online. And we have one. The name just says, Bree? Bree, are you... Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, so you're here to testify on the Harlem Theater?
Yes, I am.
You're on.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bree Jones, and I'm the founder of an organization called Parity. We work to rebuild vacant and abandoned row homes to create affordable housing. And I'm here to testify in enthusiastic favor of the Harlem Theater becoming a historic registered place. We all know that in neighborhood revitalization, it's not just about creating new residential units and new homeowners and new renters, but it's also about creating commercial space and commercial amenities and third places where people can come together to fellowship. The Harlem Theater is an enormous and a huge asset to the Harlem Park community already as it is. But with the vision that Angela and Anthony have for the theater, it will truly become, I think, not just an asset to Harlem Park, but to old West Baltimore. I also just want to commend Angela and Anthony for the preservation of this historic asset when we know that, you know, at this time, a lot of our historic assets in old West Baltimore and black communities are under assault and being torn down. And so, it's with all of that said, that I just want to, again, reaffirm my support for the Harlem Theater becoming a historic designated place. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any other hands raised? I don't see any. Now, we're moving to phone calls. And we don't see any phone calls. Okay, for the committee, there is an amendment to consider for this bill. CHAP is proposing a technical amendment to correct the spelling of theater. Is there a motion to move the amendment?
So moved.
Moved by Bullock, second by Ramos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to move the bill as amended?
So moved.
So moved by Bullock, second by Ramos, sorry. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway? Is a yes. Dorsey absent. Glover absent. Ramos? Is a yes. And Stokes? Is a yes. This bill will move to second reader and at the next council meeting. Thank you all, and thank you, Councilman Bullock. Wonderful job there.
Thank you.
The next bill, number 22-0264, landmark list exteriors, Canton Railroad Transfer Bridge. For the purpose of designating the Canton Railroad Transfer Bridge an improvement-only parcel located at Ward 01, Section 10, Block 1902F, Lot 001, as an historical landmark exterior. This bill was introduced on August 15, 2022. The bill's sponsor is Councilman Cohen. Councilman Cohen, would you like to make comments?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to the folks on the previous bill and to my colleague, Councilman Bullock. It's important preservation, so appreciate it. The Railroad Transfer Bridge is a monument to Baltimore's rich industrial past, which for 150 years cemented our city as one of the country's most prolific and important hubs of commerce. It symbolizes our harbor as a place of innovation and hard work, literally a gateway to Baltimore as well as to technological innovation. Now, as a Baltimore historic landmark, we hope that the Transfer Bridge will take its rightful place as a physical monument to Baltimore's role in the industrial revolution. I'm honored to introduce this bill on behalf of the citizens of Canton, my district, and all those who love and use our beautiful harbor. While the role our harbor plays in the daily life of Baltimore has changed and transitioned with time, this landmark will allow us to stay steeped in the history of our home. Also, want to just personally thank Dr. Raymond Barr, who's with us here today in chambers, for all the work that he has done on particularly this piece of legislation, but also in just preserving some of our very rich history in southeast Baltimore. So, thank you again for being with us.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, we'll now hear from agency representatives and start with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Jeff Hocksteller from the Law Department, and we stand by our report and approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. And Eric Holcomb with CHAP.
Lauren Shisik with CHAP. CHAP staff believes that this is a significant surviving industrial maritime structure in Baltimore. And it allowed for the transport of railroad cars across the harbor on car floats between Canton, Locust Point, and the inner harbor. And the structure is really an engineering landmark that reflects the intertwined histories of railroads, maritime industries, and manufacturing that were so critical to Baltimore's leading role in industrial heritage in the 19th and 20th centuries. And CHAP staff stands by our report.
Thank you. And the Planning Commission gave a favorable report, and the BMCA also is supporting the Planning Commission and housing and community development.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Stephanie Murdoch for the Department of Housing and Community Development. As the sponsor mentioned, this Transfer Bridge is a significant surviving maritime structure in Baltimore. It's also located in an area that's seen significant adaptive reuse of former industrial buildings for residential purposes. We know that this Transfer Bridge is important to the neighborhood, and it's also important to the preservation of that maritime industrial history. So, we stand by our favorable bill report. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And BDC?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Micah Fetz, representing the BDC. BDC stands by our report, and the BDC supports passage of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And for in-person testimony, we have Ray Barr.
My name is Raymond Barr. I'm Canton resident. I'm in charge of the Canton History Project as part of the Canton Community Association. This is a very important part of the Industrial Revolution, because this was left here by city council members in 1989 to preserve that as a monument to the Industrial Revolution. If you think about it, why did they need something like this? They transferred railroad cars and engines from Locust Point back and forth. It was a busy harbor. It was a working harbor, and it was a booming harbor. It was part of the Industrial Revolution that was taking place in Canton. And it was in anticipation of the Erie Canal, which was taking competition to the west in Ohio. And the entire area was booming, and they needed the harbor as a working harbor in order to accomplish a lot of the transfers and the like. So, it stood there for a long period of time. If you go to Canton, you can't miss this. Everybody gets their picture in front of this. It's in all the newsletters and Canton bulletins and things like that. And it stands as a monument to this Industrial Revolution, which started in 1828 and lasted into the 1980s over 150 years. It was orchestrated by the Canton Company, which was in existence for that period of time, over 150 years. It had 10,000 acres. It went from Canton all the way to Back River. And Canton was a solid area for a long period of time, because it had a working neighborhood that was there for five decades. And it started there and went east, and then when it started going down Clint Street, all of a sudden, the maritime industry became part of this and became an early part of the Maryland Port Authority and the like. And it continues, as you well know, as it goes east. It picked up the old airport, and now we have 500 acres. Almost, that's for the container ships that are coming in, the large container ships that are coming in. But if you go east directly, you go in Amazon and all the conglomerates of the Amazons. And then, a little bit north is Baltimore City Hospital or Hopkins Bayview, and that is also growing as well. In between, there's a lot of development for housing as well as for tech companies, AOL and other tech companies and the like. The place ended in 1980, but the Industrial Revolution continues eastward. So, 10,000 acres that were developed by the Canton Company that was in existence from 1828 until 1980. So, the Industrial Revolution that took place in Canton doesn't get as much respect. And this icon is a monument to that Industrial Revolution. So, that's why it's so important that we identify, not just as a monument, but as a monument to a working harbor that was part of the boominess of the Industrial Revolution that was taking place for 10,000 acres and for 150 years, over 150 successful companies, and continues even to this day. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave, do you have... I know you're... Sounds like you're a history buff. Do you know what happened to the Canton Company?
It... Okay, 1980s.
For people listening.
Of Felby and Murdoch, David Murdoch. Not the Murdoch of the papers. Another Murdoch that came in and did the large hotel downtown and the like. At that time, he was in charge of large companies that would take companies that were having little problems, take them over and sell all the aspects of it. And that's how he made money, in order to... with conglomerate and the like. So, that's when Canton Company was sold. All the papers were left in warehouses, which have been given to the Museum of Industry. And the only thing left is the Canton Railroad, which has been taken over by the state of Maryland.
Okay.
But it's an interesting... They had... Canton Company had it for 150 years. But then Pennsylvania Railroad took it over for a little bit under the name Penn Road. But they left the directors of the Canton Company in place. Didn't touch them for 50 years. So, they had the directors for 150 years. And in fact, when they first started, the directors were almost like city people, because the first two presidents of the Canton Company became mayors of Baltimore.
And you mentioned another. You mentioned the Pennsylvania Railroad, some more history. That was a job maker, especially for a number of men that left, that were coming out of World War II.
Like my grandfather.
And my father. And then, a lot of those workers went on and was hired at Bethlehem Steel, too. So, that industrial process.
They put a lot of money in down there. $15 million for their peer. And they also, the Canton Company built two railroads, the Union Railroad and the way out of Baltimore. So, the Union Railroad, they had for about 30, 40 years before selling it to the Pennsylvania Railroad. And then, they built the Canton Railroad. And the purpose of the railroad was with the switching they had, they perfected, they could get into the industries along the seashores. And very efficient. And even to this day, very efficient, because you have the three major highways. You have deep water. Canton, the initial directors of the Canton Company argued with the city of Baltimore that the center of Baltimore should not be where it is now, because it was swampy waters and things like that. Deep water, 30 to 50 feet, was in Canton. And the center of Baltimore should have been in Canton at that time. They argued with that. And in fact, they built a hub of railroad stations in Canton along Boston Street for BNO and Susquehanna Railroad, along with the Philadelphia, Wilmington, and Baltimore Railroad. But the city directors at that time decided not to have the hub in Baltimore. But it was at that train station that Frederick Douglass took to escape slavery in Maryland. The train depot that he took to escape slavery in Maryland was at Boston and Canton Avenue, at that time called Chesapeake Avenue.
Some great history there.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, now, there's no more... Is there anyone else in person that didn't sign up that would like to speak on this bridge? And I'd like to recognize another member of the committee, Councilman Glover of the 13th District. Now, we're going to move on to online. Any hands raised? And there are none. Any phone callers? None. And there are no amendments to this bill? Is a motion to move the bill? So moved by Ramos and second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway? Yes. Dorsey absent. Glover? Yes. Ramos? Yes. Stokes? Yes. And this bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. And the next bill, number 22-0265, landmark list exteriors, 3818 Roland Avenue. For the purpose of 3818 Roland Avenue... purpose of 3818 Roland Avenue, block 36, I'm sorry, block 356, 3A, lot 039, as an historical landmark exterior. This bill was introduced on August 15, 2022. This bill was sponsored by Councilmember Ramos. Councilmember Ramos, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, committee and colleagues. We are humbly requesting your support of this bill to make 3818 Roland a city landmark. You know, everybody I think knows that there's been a lot of development in the Hamden community, which is where this is located. This particular building has unique, very different architecture than the rest of the area. And the community was very interested in preserving that as there are other things happening in the neighborhood. We found out that it was historic, not just for the architecture, but because one of the first owners, if not the first owner, was actually one of the first, Madam Chair, you'll appreciate this, one of the first women to ever own property in Baltimore. And so I'll let CHAP add any other details, but we're very excited to, she was also a seamstress, her own businesswoman. So at that time, you know, way before the turn of the century, not way before, but before the turn of the century, was very unique. So it's great to be able to preserve this history and this building. And thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from committee? Hearing none. The committee will now hear from agency representatives. We'll start with the city solicitor's office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Hockstler with the city's law department. We stand by our report and approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. And then we'll hear from CHAPs again.
Good afternoon. Stacy Montgomery with CHAP. Our commission found this to be historically significant for two reasons. First, for as the councilwoman referred to, its long tenure, its long association with a woman who was the owner from 1900 to 1944 named Catherine Chambers Naylor. Catherine Chambers bought the property in 1900. She was a dressmaker who had worked in the factories of Woodbury as a child and learned the skill of being a seamstress and likely taught it to others as her niece and other dressmakers lived as boarders in the house with her. She married late in life and, but lived most of life. She was the owner of this property since 1900 to 1944, and then it was sold and became a funeral home. The house is also really distinctive. It is a freestanding brick home with a two-story wood porch that is from Roland Avenue, quite distinctive and unseen really throughout Baltimore City. Catherine Naylor was also, just to go back, the female who owned the home, she also was a developer. She developed a row in another area of Hamden. And her brother was a builder who built a lot of homes and girlfriend and homeland, and he probably helped to build those homes as well. But she was very engaged as a developer on her own and just a really, she went from being, she grew up, she was born on a farm in Howard County and became a member of the Roland Park Civic Association. So really, her life changed dramatically due to her own skills as a dressmaker. She made her own way in life and went from somebody who grew up with many, many siblings on a small farm to living in a home that she owned in Roland Park and being part of that association. So that's a major transformation during the early 20th century. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, for that information. And the Planning Commission also again gave a favorable report and BMZA supports the Planning Commission findings. And now we'll hear from Housing.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock with the Department of Housing and Community Development. I will echo our sister agency's comments about this particular bill, not only as a historic structure, but it's also a story that should be uplifted. And I think through the Department of Housing and Community Development and some of our homeownership incentives, it's a story that we want to continue to see pushed out to people that are seeking security and mobility through homeownership. So we happily stand by our favorable bill report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Micaa Fetz for the BDC. BDC stands by its report and the report is favorable.
Thank you. And no in-person sign up, but I'll just, if there's anyone in, okay, so now we'll see if there's.
I'm just going to see if there are.
Anyone online? No hands raised? And now we'll check for phone calls. And no callers? Okay, the committee heard testimony and recommendations that support the legal standards and findings of this bill. There's no amendments. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos and seconded by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway, yes. Dorsey absent. Glover, yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. This bill will move to second reader. And next bill, 22-0277, the landmark list Reed Callaway House. This is the last bill. This bill was introduced on September 12, 2022. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Torrance. And Councilmember Torrance, your comments, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to reintroduce this bill. It's been a long time coming. This is the name, the historic home of Cab Calloway's grandmother, to give him that historic designation. Many of you do not know that the 2100 block and 2200 block of Druid Hill Avenue had multiple homes that were owned by Cab Calloway. Unfortunately, they're not there, but they're being replaced by the Cab Calloway Legends Park. And to honor Cab Calloway's connection with Druid Heights, we're going to honor a portion of his grandmother's home in terms of like the designation. To give you a little background history, the 7th District happens to be in one of the most historic areas for African-American history. When you think about Henry S Cummings being the first African-American councilperson ever elected to this body, we can think about Verna Welkum, we can think about Councilwoman Adams, a number of people, women and men, that have been elected here, right? But in addition to that, we think about Billie Holiday, we think about County Cullen, who also had a house there as well. The Boys had a meeting space there as well. And not too far from there, in Marlboro Hill, we have Juanita Jackson Mitchell's actual home, as well as where a portion of the "I Have a Dream" speech was actually written in Baltimore. So I just want to give people a history of how close these homes are to each other. And to say it even more, this is us honoring Black history today. And I look forward to everyone coming out to the ribbon coming for the Cab Calloway Legends Park, which will be in the same location that the home was, but it will be a brand-new park that will be maintained by Ricken Parks in the heart of an urban area in West Baltimore.
Thank you so much for those, some more history. Now we'll hear from the agency representative, city solicitor.
De'ara Cobolden, on behalf of the law department, we stand by our bill and approve the legislation for form and sufficiency.
Thank you. CHAPs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lauren Shizik with CHAP. I just want to acknowledge Councilmember Torrance. Thank you so much for introducing, reintroducing this bill. And just to continue on his comments, you know, the thing that's so difficult is so often honoring people for places where they lived. It privileges people with stable home lives. And Cab and Blanche Callaway lived in several homes during their childhood in Baltimore. And so, you know, it becomes difficult to sort of determine which is the most significant, which is the most important place. And I know that there was a lot of interest in saving the property on Druid Hill Avenue, but in CHAP's research, I did a lot of research, extensive research, on the Callaway family, but also their extended families, Cab and Blanch's maternal family, paternal family, and really determined that this property at 1316 North Carey Street was sort of the familial home base for the Callaways, for Cab and Blanche Callaway and their extended families. They lived at this address, which was their maternal grandparents' home, for only two years, but they were here frequently. When they moved to Chicago as adults, you know, to sing in the clubs and they had their mother come and join them, their younger brother stayed with his grandmother and finished at Frederick Douglass High School, living in this house. So their maternal grandmother actually really fostered their musical talent. They all had natural musical talent, but their Reed and Credit extended families really helped them with their musical education, particularly their maternal grandmother, Annie Credit Reed, whose home this was. And so this designation honors not just Blanche and Cab Calloway, but their extended families that served the city as civil rights leaders, as educators, as musicians. Really, it really takes, it does take a village in raising a family. And this was really that large extended family's home base.
Thank you so much for that. I just want to just make a comment, not really a question, but I'm glad that these homes are of people that have, you know, set a mark in society or are really being tracked. As we all know, African-Americans have lost a lot of their history. And if it's one, two, three, four homes, I think they all should be kind of recognized just, you know, it's important. It was something that was taken away because of slavery and lots of other things. So again, I think we're on the right track to continuing, preserving and making history with that. Moving on to the Planning Commission with this one, also a favorable report and BMZA supports plannings, findings and housing again.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Of note, this property is located just a few blocks away from the West Impact Investment Area, which is undergoing significant community development. The designation of the Reed Callaway House as a historical landmark will add to the economic and social development for the Sandtown Winchester neighborhood by strengthening the stewardship of historical and cultural resources and protecting and enhancing the preservation of Baltimore's historic buildings. We respectfully stand by our bill report is favorable. Thank you.
Thank you. For Development Corporation, Micaa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Micaa Fetz for the Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our report and the report is favorable.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions at this point? And Johns Hopkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Johns Hopkins with Baltimore Heritage. And I just wanted to say one thing about this particular designation and to say thank you for everybody who's worked on it. I think it's important that we get, you hinted at it, that we get ahead of the game with a lot of these important places, especially Black Baltimorean places. I'm looking at my jazz-loving councilman friend here with Chick Webb. But just, I want to share one story. We've lost a lot of important places that we didn't need to lose if we had publicly known the information ahead of time. I think maybe one of my saddest losses is Little Willie Adams. And some of you may know Little Willie Adams. Yes, he was a numbers runner, but if you were a Black Baltimorean in his time and you started a business, you said thank you to Mr. Adams. He probably gave rise to more entrepreneurs in Baltimore than almost anybody. His bar just north of Pennsylvania Avenue was demolished several years ago without us really knowing what was going on until it was too late. And I think this designation is at least one house where that won't happen to. And I'll look forward to many more where we can start mapping out, well, this one's not going to be demolished and this one's not going to be demolished and this one's important. So thank you all for your efforts on this.
Thank you for your comments. And just want to add with Willie Adams, his wife, Victorine Adams, also played a big role as well.
Right. And their house is fabulous and it should be a landmark too.
Thank you for your important testimony. The committee will now take public testimony. Is there anyone else in person that wants to speak? Seeing and hearing none? We're now online with a hand raised and that's Carlos.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you go.
Alejandro.
Okay, thank you so much. You're on.
Okay. I am the executive director of the Cab Calloway Foundation. And I would like to express our thanks to Councilman Torrance and to Lauren Shizik, I think that's how you say that, who we have had conversations with. Martha Ullalia Reed was a Morgan State graduate. Andrew Reed was a president of the Brotherhood of Liberty. This house has even more importance than just Cab and Blanche, which is extremely significant because they both stood on the shoulders of a legacy of WEB DuBois and WC Handy and brought Black culture forward and put it in the public eye and has made it part of our whole culture. So this is all part of the truth that needs to be told. And the buildings are the voice of some of that now because every time we see a sign that says something poignant like this, we take note. So we look forward to supporting the Druid Heights Community Development Corporation and Cab Calloway Legends Park and Affordable Housing. We look forward to working with the UB Blake Center. We look forward to working with Baltimore's CHAP because we learn so much from Lauren and her team about Cab's life and the fact that his father is actually buried under a parking lot in Baltimore. And we would love to know too, if anybody's listening, if he actually died at Crowesville of tuberculosis in the first days of a Black sanitarium back in 1910. So this is, you know, it's an ongoing story for us. And to hear you honoring his life, his sister's life, his mother's life, his grandfather's life, his grandmother's life, is all great. We stand with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your important testimony. And I think we have one more hand raised. Kathy Reed?
Kathy.
Kathy, you're on.
And I am a direct descendant of Andrew and Annie Reed, the grandparents of Cab Calloway and my grandfather, my grandfather and great-grandfather, first and father. But anyway, I wanted to just ditto what Carlos said and to just thank the council, thank the committee, thank CHAPs and Lauren and also Councilman Torrance. I just want to thank you all for putting this property, 1316 Carey Avenue, Carey Street, in front of the council for approval. As everyone has said, there's a lot of history in that house. There was a lot of history. My great-great-grandparents were both musicians, both musically trained, and they were, she was the organist, Annie Reed, Annie Credit Reed at Leaden Hall and Union Baptist, and he was the choir director. And they shared both, you know, they shared a lot of history. I have copies of articles where Andrew Reed made Emancipation Proclamation. He did the anniversary celebrations in Frederick and in Baltimore and made speeches. So I'm not going to take this any longer, but I just wanted to thank everyone and just let you know how important this property is. And we want the history of not only the Reeds and the Credits, but also Blanche and Cab Calloway to live on through this designation. Thank you.
Thank you for your important testimony. Any more hands raised? Seeing none, we'll now take phone callers. And there are none. The committee heard testimony and recommendations that support the legal standards and findings. And again, Councilman Torrance, thank you for this, another piece of added history. There are no amendments. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, seconded by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway, say yes. Dorsey absent. Glover, is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes, is a yes. And this bill will move to second reader. And again, want to thank you, CHAPs, for this hard work. And also, this was, I think I'll step out on a limb and say, this was a really good hearing of economic and community development for, all this is a part of economic and community development. To see, to have a hearing with just such good pieces of preserving history of this city helps that economic phase to move forward. city helps that economic phase to move forward. So thank you again, CHAPS, for this wonderful hearing. This, thank you all for attending today's hearing, and we are adjourned.